Each candidate will be given five minutes to introduce themselves. So give us your introduction and give us an idea of why you're running for the school. Our first candidate to answer will be Mr. Eddie.
As most of you all know, my name is Ryan Eddie. And I would like to, first off, just thank you all for being here. It's obvious that the ones that are here tonight are concerned about our school district and concerned about the education of our students in this district. And that means a lot to me, to see your concerns and to be involved in our district. But I, as I said, my name is Ryan Eddie, as I think most of you all know. I grew up here in New Madrid. My mother and father, David and Betty Lou Eddie, are longtime residents of this town. Graduated from 1995, I graduated in 1995, from NMCC, from Central. And I went on to the University of Missouri at Columbia and earned a BS degree in agronomy. And after that, I came back home and I farmed for a few years with my dad. And ended up, after that, I worked at the Delta Center, the University of Missouri Delta Center in Portageville as a research specialist in soybean breeding. While I was down there, I had the opportunity to earn my master's degree from Arkansas State. And after that, I was able to have the opportunity to go to work for the Farm Service Agency. And that's what I'm doing currently. I'm the county executive director for the office here in New Madrid County. I have, on a personal side, my wife Renee and I have been married for 15 years. And we have three children. Austin, who is in the sixth grade at New Madrid Elementary. Lillian is in the first grade at New Madrid Elementary. And Colton is three years old. And we live in around Little Fords Community, out in the country. And we're members of the New Madrid Church of Christ, where I serve as a deacon. And I'm responsible for the youth programs there and also education. And as Mr. Comer said, I know some of this time is supposed to be spent on why do we want to be on the school board? What motivates us? Why are we, why do we want to be a part of this? And I'm passionate about this because of my children that I just mentioned. When Renee and I moved back, we lived in Warrenton, Missouri for about five years. And when we moved back, we knew that we wanted to live in this school district. We had the option that we could live in other places. We could have lived in Sykesville. And we, you know, we thought about some other options, but we decided that we wanted to be a part of this community. And we made that choice. And with that choice, we also decided that our kids would definitely attend public school here. And so since they are going to be students of this school district, more than likely until they, until Colton graduates, personally, I want it to be the best it can possibly be. And that is the reason why I want to be on the school. I want it to be a school that is head and shoulders above the rest. I want it to be one of the greatest districts in the state of Missouri. And I feel like that I can be an asset to the leadership team that makes that happen. And so I appreciate everyone's support and the opportunity to come out and speak to you all tonight.
I want to thank the chamber for inviting all of us to attend tonight and go through this forum and maybe help, better inform you and help you make the decision on who you want to serve. You on your local school board. I think most of you know me, I think I know most of you, but my name is Scott Riley. I did previously serve on the board from 1999 to 2014. I had some people approach me and ask me if I would consider doing it again. I do have an interest in the school district. I had one when I ran the last time. My daughter graduated last May. She attends Southeast Missouri State University at Sehick. She has just decided that she wants to be a teacher. Kind of made me proud. I have a son, who's 15-year-old Christian. I married Pam Johnson. They would have been here this evening, but my son is part of the precaution ensemble who, I believe it was last week, received the only one rating in the state of Missouri in the schools that participated. He had an ensemble tonight. I told him that I wish that they would give his and support him. You know, I do have a passion about this school district. When I decided to seek office in 1999 for the first time, our daughter was two and a half years old. And I remembered that educational opportunities that were afforded to me as a student of New Madrid County R1. And I knew that this would not have been possible without the service and dedication of those who had previously served on the board for New Madrid County R1. And those experiences and opportunities would not have been available to me and to other students that came through that district. This inspired me to serve, hoping that I would make a positive impact, not just for my own child, but for every child that walks the halls of our district. Beginning with preschool year, pre-walking out as a graduating senior. And to provide these opportunities in the safest possible learning environment with highly qualified teachers and staff that are second to none. And I believe we do that. It was my desire that each graduating student from NMCC would be well-prepared for what the world had to offer as they begin the next chapter of their life. Those same thoughts and desires still hold true today. I had been approached and asked if I would consider running again. I thought about it. Wasn't sure what I wanted to do. I prayed about it. Sit down and talk to family about it. Talk to my kids about it. Because it is a time-consuming job. I felt that if the people had enough faith in me to come and ask me to consider again, that I ought to have enough respect for them to at least do it. Because I do, as Ryan said, there's 524 school districts in the state of Missouri. I told somebody one time that if you parked the car on the driveway and you walked up beside the island to walk on the sidewalk to go through the first door, you would have to walk through 523 school districts. Because they were wanting to see what we were doing to be like us. And I still think that holds true today. Some of my past experiences, I'm a member of the Little First Baptist Church. I've been all my life. I'm a member of the Finance Committee, which serves as us. I'm a member of NMCC Booster Club. I graduated from Central in 1987. I attended Littlewood Elementary School. Then I went to junior high in Hiredale before it consolidated for the fifth grade. Then we made Central. Then I went back. Then you get to ring that bell. I worked for Association Electric for the past 21 years. Part of Craig Hill's, that man right there, he helped me. He's provided a good living for my family. I worked for the Bank of New Madrid during my high school years, from 1985 through college breaks, summer breaks. I gave a full employment once I graduated from college in 1993 from Southeast Missouri State University. As I said earlier, I do still have a passion and I have interest in the school district. And I want it to be the best in the state of Missouri. Thank you.
Most of you probably know me. My name is Jenny Coke. And I am running for New Madrid County School Board. I am a longtime resident of New Madrid County. I attended elementary school at Matthews. Graduated from New Madrid County Central in 1993, a long time ago. Attended Murray State and graduated '97 with their agribusiness economics degree and went on to obtain my master's in business administration from Wynwood University. I've had several jobs since then. I worked for the Department of Agriculture at Murray State University, Kentucky Soybean Association, Louis Dreyfus, Rice Island Foods. And currently, I'm self-employed as a commodity trader with CTC Commodities. My husband is also self-employed as a farmer in this county, Jason, most of you know him. And we have two sons, Clay used 10 and Craig six, both attending Magic Elementary. My decision to run for school board is simple. Of course, I have small children, so that's a big part of it. But just to represent the students, the parents, the staff, and the taxpayers, because I do care about this district, so. As a parent outside looking in, especially when you get kids in school, you see just how much of responsibility these teachers, faculty, and staff have to take on on a daily basis. And also, the board has a great responsibility. And I'd just like to contribute to that myself. So I appreciate your consideration.
We'll start with the questions that have been submitted. Mr. Riley will answer first on this one. And then it'll be Ms. Coke and Mr. Eddie. "As society seems to be more lax in discipline of their own children, it seems that schools are following suit. Do you think that is happening in our district? If so, what do you plan to do to change it?" Now, I'd be glad to repeat any of these before you answer if you'd like.
It's kind of funny because one time I was sitting in the freeze queen when I was serving on the board. And there were some gentlemen talking about the district. And one of them kind of got on me a little heavy and they said, "Well, y'all need to, y'all need to do more out there because y'all are not making them do what they need to do and everything." And I actually had an uncle sitting in the freeze queen with me. And he stopped a gentleman and he said, "No, you're not understanding. Said it's not the school's place to teach the child discipline. Said you teach that at home. They should know that when they come to the school. Now, if they disrupt, it's the school's place to discipline, but don't expect them to do it at the school. You need to do that at home." I know, and I've been off a couple of years. I know that they don't, they're not able to discipline sometimes as they did when I was in school. When I was in school, you didn't want to get in trouble at school because they knew about it at the house before you got home. But now they're talking about lawsuits or a no paddle list or... I'm for discipline. I'm for it in the right way. I'm not sure what all you can do to correct it or to change things because of the way the law's written out and lawsuits. But I am for discipline. I don't think it's the school's place to have to teach discipline, but I think it's the school's place to maintain it. I think it starts at the house.
Can you repeat the question?
"As society seems to be more lax in discipline of their own children, it seems that schools are following suit. Do you think that is happening in our district? If so, what do you plan to do to change it?"
I don't know if it's happening in our district specifically, but I'd say overall in society, yes. I'd say that's more of a challenge. And kids need discipline. Kids, I'd say, desire discipline, whether they would admit it or not. Discipline would help them go on to be better citizens. But it'd have to be within the limits, like he says of the law, what the school can do. So I do think it's important.
Well, it's a fact that most children spend just as much time at school as they do at home, as far as the waking hours are concerned. So the school district does have a responsibility to some degree to teach and to mold these kids into responsible citizens. And so it is the parents' responsibility, as Mr. Riley said, and I would completely agree with that. But as we know, the parents can always be around. And so the school does have some responsibility in that regard. I personally am a proponent of corporal punishment, okay? I think that it's effective. And I think that there's some students that it's the only viable means to change their behavior. However, you have to understand, and I'm understanding this more and more as I spend time on the board. It's challenging to administer corporal punishment these days with the environment, the legal environment that we live in. You know, our society is not what it was 20 years ago when I graduated. And so even though we may have personal beliefs about what we feel is effective, we have to be careful in some of the decisions that we make. That leads us to, there are other forms of discipline. There, we have, currently, we have an ISS, in-school suspension program. And, you know, we also have a, for more of a long-term issue, we have alternative school. So we have suspension as an option. There's different options, different types of discipline that are still available. To go to Mr., to also answer another one of Mr. Comer's questions, do I think that sometimes that our school district is lax in discipline? I would say that sometimes we are. There are cases when I think that there should be more discipline applied, but I don't think that's across the board. I think that's on a case-by-case basis. However, I do think it's important, as I said, I think it's important for all of the staff to realize that if we don't discipline these children, we're doing them a disservice. We really are. Because we are charged, as the school board, the administration, the faculty, the staff, we are charged with the responsibility to help these kids grow up into good, responsible, moral citizens. And if we don't do that with discipline, then we have failed then. Thank you.
Your opinion of the program that is commonly known as Common Core and why?
What I do know about it, it's mandated by the state. Funding is tied into everything. Common Core is no different. I don't know the details of the curriculum specifically. I know I've heard good, I've heard bad things about it. I mean, talking to the teachers, they have better opinions on that than I do. I could only say if curriculum was presented to the board that went against my values or beliefs, then I would take the issue with it as a board member and rely on the experience of the educators and administrators to help in my decision-making.
I think there's some good things about Common Core. I think that the fact that federal regulators have attempted to ensure that all districts hold a certain level, a certain level of standards, to keep kids from falling through the cracks, from keep, to keep kids from, that are in certain districts from not receiving the same education as kids in other districts. That's the intent of Common Core. However, there are things about it that aren't good. Personally, I think that's a good, those intentions are good, but when it takes control away from the local boards, that's a problem. And that is, that's one of the side effects of Common Core in its nature, obviously. I mean, that's the whole, like I said, that's the intent of Common Core, is to set a standard, a uniform standard for all districts to abide by. Okay? Well, when you set that standard across the nation, well, that control lies with that statue and not with the local board. So that's a problem with Common Core. Because it's my feeling that local boards know best what their children need in form of education. I do think that Common Core is something that, I will say this, a school board really does not have the authority to say, "Well, we're not going to, we're not going to do Common Core. We're not going to participate in Common Core." You do, as a school board, you do have the authority to approve certain types of curriculum. That curriculum may or may not be what they call aligned with those standards. But you have to understand, as Ms. Coke said, the standards, the tests are based, the standardized tests that all students have to take are based on these standards. So therefore, if we as a district don't educate kids and use those standards as direction, then they won't perform on the test. And that leads to problems. That leads to, on their own, from a district standpoint, it can lead to lack of accreditation. It can lead to lack of funding. Also, and what those things lead to is a general decline in your school system. If you lose your accreditation, then it's possible that students graduating may not be accepted into certain colleges. There's lots of things that, you know, I think it's easy to say, "Well, I don't like Common Core," but you have to look at the big picture. And do I like the fact that it takes local control away from us as a school board? Absolutely not. But really, at this point, our hands are tied. And it's the federal lawmakers that have the power to take Common Core away from us. Thank you.
Well, Ryan was right. The local school boards, they don't have much control of that. As far as me, I am not a big supporter of Common Core. And the reason why, whether it was Common Core, the math test, I think that when I went to school, I don't remember taking all those tests. And I think it ought to get back to where the teachers can walk in August and start teaching the subjects that we need, instead of having to go in in August and start teaching a test that they're going to take in April. I assume it's still in April. I just, Mr. Barnwell, he was a teacher, he was a teacher administrator when I was in school. We didn't test that much either. And the local school board had control of their curriculum. And that's the way it ought to be right now. I don't think it's a fair test because your districts are not the same. And your students are not the same in different areas. But as Ryan said, your funding, you're almost held hostage because it ties into money. You don't do the test, you don't get accredited, you don't receive the funding. And that's wrong. But as far as me, I am not a big proponent of the test. I think the teachers ought to be able to go in and teach the subjects of math, reading, English, history, science, the way they did when I was in school, instead of having to teach from August to April for one test.
The question is, the phrase "teaching to the test" is often heard regarding how schools concentrate on things like the math test. This can lead to a concentration on a few subjects to get higher scores at the expense of other subjects. This would not seem to provide a well-rounded education. What are your thoughts on this?
Well, I think that question is similar to the one that we just, the previous question. And I talked about why teachers are forced to teach to the test. And there's only so many hours in the day, right? So we have to make a decision, what are we going to spend our instructional time doing? And like we've all mentioned, the state tests are important when it comes to funding and accreditation and things like that. And so those hours of the school day do tend to be devoted to ensuring that students can do well on those tests. It's a fact. So we have to think outside the box. And we have to start thinking, okay, what can we do differently? How can we still have time to teach some of these things like, it amazes me that we don't teach cursive writing anymore. That just, I'm floored by that. But there's not enough hours in the day to do it. And so you have to start thinking, okay, how do we get around this? Well, currently, Dr. Duncan, our new superintendent, he's working on a grant proposal. It's called a 21st Century Grant. And it's, this is brand new and process that he's working on right now. So most of you all probably are aware of this. But he is, I said, I said, "our new superintendent." He's hired for next year. I'm sorry, just to clarify. But he'll become superintendent starting next, next school year. But he, along with, along with the help of Ms. Masterson and Mr. Garner and Dr. Amick, they are working on putting together a proposal for these after-school programs. And what the, and what will be accomplished in these after-school programs, there will be enrichment-type activities. Activities that will, that will be in addition to those basics, if you will, that are being taught during the school day. So I think those are things that we have to look at. That's just one example. Those are things that we can look at as a school board. We can't just throw our hands up and say, "Well, you know, hey, we got to teach this test. That's all we, that's all we can do." We have to look at outside the box, as I said, and we have to think about alternatives that we can do to still share these things that are so vital, so important to these students, that we may not be able to get to them during the school day. And I think we'll find that there's going to be several, several students that participate in that because of parents, just like you all, that know that those things are important. And so, but I do think that it is a problem to teach to the test. I don't like that. But as we've, as we've talked about, especially with the previous question, sometimes our hands are tied on some of that. So we have to look for other alternatives in order to achieve those results. Thank you.
Well, I agree with Ryan on that. The teacher in each classroom knows where their weaknesses are and their strengths. And if they feel like they have to work on one part of the test a little bit more than others, but yes, I do think sometimes we do have to teach toward the test, but it all goes back to the accreditation. As Ryan said, they're working on grants. They have after-school tutoring to help, to help the kids that are having trouble in subjects that they're falling behind in. My son takes advantage of that. But personally, I do think they have to teach toward the test. But I think the teachers do a good job in trying to manage their time to break away from the test to go back, as Ryan said. Cursive writing, they don't, they don't take, tell them time. I've asked my kid before, something about time. They said, looked at me like a deer in a headlights. And I said, "Well, what time is it?" "Digital watches." They don't take time. Counting money. And it's not the teacher's fault, but that's not what's in the test. I just think that, I think it's sad in a way that we've got away from that. But nobody has a choice.
Given that and what Brian had said, I mean, I don't know the exact details of the time. You know, I'm not well-versed on all of that. I know it's always a trade-off. I'm sure there's some benefits to teaching the test, but also now it must tie the hand to the teachers. If they do see something that is lacking in the students that they need to teach, they may not have that time. So those after-school programs or enrichment programs that he talked about, like if So those after-school programs or enrichment programs that he talked about, I could see being a huge benefit.
And we'll be Mr. Riley, Ms. Cope, and Mr. Eddy. The question is, could you support a board decision that you are not in favor of? Why or why not? Could you support a board decision that you were not in favor of? Why or why not?
The prejudice that we always had when I did serve on the board, and Mr. Barnwell can attest to this. If you had an opinion about something, you voted that opinion. You voiced that opinion. But when the vote was taken, if it was 6-1, 5-2, 4-3, and it didn't go in your favor, when you walked out of that door, it was 7-0. You didn't badmouth the rest of the board members? You didn't go out telling people when they came to you and voiced their opinion on why that did or did not pass? You did not voice how you voted or how the other members voted? You supported the board as a whole. It was 7-0 when you walked out that door. So if I was opposed to something, it passed? It passed, I supported it. If I was for it and failed? I support the vote.
Question, of course, if you're not in favor of it, you don't want to support it. But again, it is one voice, one team, that school board. So you go in there and you might agree to disagree, but when you walk out, you're supporting that board as a whole, so.
No, but our strong army. Continue, do you need the question again?
Well, go ahead and you can repeat it.
Well, could you support a board decision that you are not in favor of and why or why not?
I would, my answer is going to be very similar to Scott and Ginny. You may not support it on a personal level. There's been things since I've been on the board that have happened that I have been a dissenter to the decision. But as Scott said, it's important that when you leave that board room, that you're all united. And the reason that that's important, it's important for the district. Any organization, you have to have unity in your leadership. The employees, they have to know that the board is united in this decision. We may as individuals not support those decisions, but we have to show unity. It's important, as I said, it's important for the organization. It's important for the team to know that. So as Ginny said, I think that is kind of a tricky question, I guess. On a personal level, you may not support it after it's said and done, but you can't let that be known publicly. Because it's important that everyone, the staff, the community, everyone knows that, well, it wasn't, this one voted for it and that one was for it, but I was against it and he was against it. It's a board decision, even when it goes.
What do you see as the major issues facing this school district?
Well, it's pretty obvious, I guess, with the announcement at Noranda, the budget is a big issue. And I'm not well-versed, I haven't seen a lot of the details of the budget. I know the board's done a good job of working through that. I know that's on the forefront, that's a big concern in this community. Curriculum that we've talked about is also a concern, and student enrollment, those would be the top three.
As Ms. Cope said, I think it's pretty obvious to everyone that the situation with Noranda is the most pressing issue at this time. As you all know, that's $3.1 million of lost revenue to the district. We don't know what will happen with Noranda at this point. We're all hoping and praying that Noranda survives or someone survives, that company does remain in the area. But I use this phrase a lot as we talk about, as the board talks about the situation with Noranda and as I talk to people in the community, we're going to hope for the best, prepare for the worst. And that's been our plan as a board up to this point. We have already made moves, we have already done things to try to offset that issue. $3.1 million is approximately 20% of our budget. So it does, it leaves a hole. And we can't count on that anymore. And so we've done some things. We have frozen salaries for the next school year. We've also gone to an 80-20 split on health insurance, which is something that the district has not done in the past. We've always paid for 100% of the health insurance. So these are things that we have applied across the board to all of our staff. We've also moved some folks around, changed their position, and unfortunately, in a few cases, that has decreased their salary. Those are hard decisions. Those are tough decisions. But we have a plan. And the plan is, as a board, to do things that don't have a negative effect on students' education. There are things that, some decisions that we make, they may affect students more than others. And we're focusing on things that hopefully have the least negative effect as possible on students. So along those lines, one thing that we are trying our best to do, and there's absolutely no guarantees at this point as we move through this process. But one thing that we are trying to do is we're trying to retain our full-time staff and not actually have to get rid of any teachers. As I said, there's absolutely no guarantees when we talk about that. We'll know more as the situation progresses. But those are things that, to us as the board, we feel like those are things that we have to look at them last because those are things that directly impact the education of students.
The most important issue of this school district is the students. That is the most important. But right now, what the focus is on is the $3.1 million lost from Noranda. And that's a big hit. But, and I'm not out there right now, I'm not sure, but when I got off the board in 2014, Mr. Ralph, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think we had a reserve built up of around 32%, which was about a little over $5 million. And that started with board members way before me. They hadn't foresight to start doing something like that for a day like today. With the shortfall of money from Noranda, it would be just like if we was faced with a similar situation in a household. There's going to have to be some moves that are made. They might not be popular. But as Ryan said, you want to keep your staff and hope to attrition that you don't have to look at jobs being cut. Because the fact is, the three biggest employers in this area are the school system, Noranda, and Associated Electric. And I would hate for someone in the school district that their spouse lost a job at Noranda to have to be faced with the same thing at school. Not saying that it might not happen, but I would hate for that to happen. As Ryan said, you don't want the students to suffer. You don't want to miss a beat. Keep trucking down the road. I hate that it's happened, I hate it for Noranda. I know how the people feel because my mom was one of them in 2008, lost her job when they cut 51-50. And it's a devastating blow to this area. But we're going to make it. You know, you don't know what's going to happen with them. They might reopen, somebody might come in and back. I don't think we need to make moves in haste because we do have the money in reserve to try to help us get along for a little while. The only thing is, you don't want to get into the reserve because if they don't come back, you don't have the money to put back in it.
Great Schools, a web-based reporting system on schools nationwide, rates schools on a scale of 1 to 10. 1 through 3, 1 to 3 are below average, 4 to 7 are average, and 8 to 10 above average. Ratings are based on test scores, student growth, and college readiness. The district as a whole, according to Great Schools, is rated a 2. NMCC High School is rated a 3. The middle school is rated a 2. Umandred Elementary is rated a 3, Littleburg is a 1, and Matthews is a 2. Other schools in the immediate area such as Risco is rated a 5. Sykesville is a 3, East Prairie and Portageville are rated 4, while schools like Jackson Middle School is rated 9 and Kennett High School is rated a 7. So that's the background, I suppose. The question is, what do you think can be done to see these scores improve? Mr. Eddy, you're first.
I think there are steps that can be taken to hopefully see improvement. Some of the things are what we've been talking about already tonight. These, going the extra mile, looking for opportunities to provide extra support to our students. The after-school tutoring, that started last year. That's been successful. There are things that are in play, that have been put in place recently and other things that we need to explore further in order to try to bring those ratings up. I'm not sure exactly what these ratings are based on, what type of hard data they get that from. But I, you know, before you really formulate a plan on how to address something, I'd have to know exactly what the problems are that are leading to these ratings and how subjective these ratings are. As we know, a lot of times organizations, they look at certain things and cherry pick some of the data out of those. So I would have to formulate a plan as to how you want to improve that. I'd want to look at what the components are that's actually causing our issues here. But I do think, speaking in general terms, you know, we do need to look at some things, some extra help that we can provide to students and things along those lines. Thank you.
I'm not around on that one, that one is so in-depth that you would have to see the material that they're basing that off of and sit down and go through it. I mean, I couldn't even remember what the numbers were that you did. Like I said, and Ryan said, tutoring, maybe have some more one-on-one seminars or after-school. I know that's what tutoring is, but sometimes in tutoring you might have a small group of five. That student might need one-on-one attention. But I just don't see how you give a true answer or a fix unless you saw the data that they're basing that off of to come up with a review.
I think that answer would be subjective, you wouldn't have placed off on exactly. Obviously, just pushing forward with the things that the board does now. I know the students continue to support the teachers and the staff and implement those programs where possible, the enrichment programs for the students in order to make the district the best that we can.
District is often a factor in families and businesses making a decision to move to a community. What do you think can be done to make our school district more competitive or maybe more attractive?
I believe right now we have one most attractive round here. But I might be a little bit on the favorable side because I'm a graduate, I'm really up here, life long. I'm not sure there's much more we can do. I mean, you have people that come in and they are looking to relocate here. I know that's been told by the administration before, when they come in to look at the school, they walk through the hall, something comes up about, how old is this building? 73th High School. They can't believe the shape that the buildings are in. I think we have good extracurricular activity programs. I think we have teachers that are second to none. I've always said that. I know the graduates that go to college, they want to come back home. And we try to get them back home. But I think we're doing, I think we're doing things right. I'm not sure if it's things outside of our control, that they don't come in. But I think as far as the school system, I just don't believe that's what the holdup is or whether they're coming.
Ms. Cope?
First question, I mean, you've got to continue to do what you're doing. I don't know that we can do more to attract them necessarily, especially as a board member. I mean, you can only do so much, support the teachers, illen that education, get those ratings up, make sure there's plenty of programs available for them.
I think that in any organization, you have to look at your strengths and you have to look at your weaknesses. And it's easy to pat yourself on the back. It's easy to say, "Look at what we've done, look at how great we are." We do need to have a sense of pride in our district. That's important, and I'm very proud of our district. I think personally, and I know those surveys that Mr. Palmer mentioned may not reflect it, but I think we've got one of the best districts in this area. However, that being so, I mean, I think we've got a lot of great assets. However, that being said, I think that there are things that we can improve. Last year, we developed goals. We went out and basically, we just had a brainstorming session. And we sat around the table, the board, along with Dr. Amick, and the board just threw goals out. What about this? What about that? And some of these were pretty off the wall. They were pretty radical, some of them. But I think that's how you get good ideas. And so through that process, we started with a lot and we massaged them and we tweaked them and we got them down to what we felt like as a board were our three most important goals for the district. The first one was to increase community involvement. That's something that we felt like that we're lacking. We need to improve in that area because research proves that good schools have strong community support. It's a fact, it's research-based. We felt like that that was an area that we needed to improve in as a district. I think that would be one thing that would be attractive. If a potential family is going to move to the area and they're looking at districts and they come to an area where the community really supports the school and is behind the school 100%, I think that's attractive to somebody that's coming in. Another thing that we decided to do to try to improve was to develop a long-term facility maintenance plan. That is so important now because of the recent budget shortfall that we've gone through. It's more important now than it was then. But to have a long-term plan on how we're going to approach just necessary maintenance. Because it is important. You don't, you can't have buildings that are falling down, the roofs leaking and things like that. As Scott said, you know, we do have to maintain our facilities so that we have comfortable, nice facilities and the resources that we need to educate our kids. A third goal, real quick, was to provide management training to our administrators. We felt like as a board that that was important. So many times, people are placed in roles and positions and they're not given any tr- and they're not given any training to help them do that job. I know with my job, I'm in management. We have routine, regular management training. So we felt like as a board that that would do something. And all of those things combined, they help to make your school district better and more attractive. And so, just to, just to finish up, I think it is important for a board to really look internally and think, yeah, we're doing good on some things, but what can we improve on? And then set goals and follow those goals and, and carry them out.
Recent events involving school shootings have alarmed the entire country and proposals have been made in some places to have possibly armed teachers in the classroom. What are your thoughts about having armed teachers in the classroom?
Considering that question, I've got a couple of teachers, maybe I should just ask them if they'd like to be armed. Are you armed or not? And that's a tough question. I mean, I don't think the teacher would be comfortable with that. I don't even really know how to answer that, to be quite honest. Obviously, security is a, a big deal in the state of age. But I wouldn't wanna speak to whether the teacher should be armed or not. My first instinct would be to say no and to have something else in place to ensure that security.
I'd say generally no. I don't think it would be a good idea for the most part. Most teachers are not trained to handle situations like that. That's not their job. And you're asking them to make life and death decisions. And I don't think that's what they signed on for. I think that's why we have school resource officers. The board, long before I got on, made the commitment that we would provide a safe environment for our students, for our staff. And that's why that, that they, at that time, were very supportive of school resource officers. And we've continued to be supportive of that. There are also other measures that, that take place. There are special locks on the classroom doors in order to keep intruders out. Students do intruder drills. There's lots of things that we can do. And we, and, and we'll matter to our school resource officers. They are armed, as, as most of you all know. And so, we're not, we're not taking the approach of hiding in the corner. I mean, we, we do feel like that, that we are defending ourselves, that we're equipped to defend ourselves. But we're doing that with properly trained individuals, that that's their job.
I agree with Jenny and Ryan both on that. I, I don't think it's the teacher's responsibility and I don't think we should put that on them. You know, when you're on the board and, and things come up and you make some decisions and sometimes after you, you get out of the board meeting and you go home, a day or two later, you're thinking about stuff, you think, well, did I really think that out before I voted that way? Or did I, I can look at all of you today and tell you without a doubt, one of the smartest things we did was put the resource officers in every building, every campus. I hate that it came to that. When Ryan went to school, Jenny went to school, I went to school, you never heard of a school resource officer or the threat of a shooting in a school sack. While I was on the board, and today, I hope we never, ever experienced that here or anywhere. But I, I would not put that responsibility on the teacher. I think that's what we got the resource officers for. Like I said, we've got one on every campus. And I think that's just a relative thing.
Cuts have to be made because of lack of funding. What do you think you would propose?
Well, I think that goes back to an earlier question. And obviously, cuts do have to be made. And, and we have done things to make those cuts. As I mentioned, the salary freeze, the, the insurance, having the employees pay twenty percent of their insurance, and also moving some, some positions around. You know, there's a, there's another component to that. Anytime you have a, it's, you know, it's, it's simple, it's simple economics. You've either got to decrease your expenses or increase your revenue. And so, aside from making cuts, there are also, we're looking at, at taking more of a holistic approach to these budget cuts and this, and this financial situation. One thing that we can do is, that we're exploring right now, we haven't made any decisions at all on this. But we do have some options as far as adjusting tax rates, things like that. Schools have four funds that, that the revenue is divided up in. And, and we do have the authority to move some of those around in order to increase our operating money, so to speak. So, you know, that's something that, that you can do without raising taxes. However, it is, you know, and I hear that a lot. Well, y'all are gonna raise my taxes. More than likely, yes. You know, I'm not gonna tell you that we won't have to. We're losing three point one million dollars. I don't know how you can do that without at least, at least raising taxes somewhat. However, the answer is not to just lean solely on, okay, we're gonna raise taxes, we're just gonna make it up. We have to take, as I said, we have to take a balanced, even-handed, fair-minded approach where we decrease our expenses and then we do try to increase our revenues. And then we also do pull from those reserves that Scott was talking about. We are fortunate that, that boards before us had enough wisdom and enough forethought to prepare us for dark days, if you will. And so, we do have some reserves. Obviously, you can't rely solely on the reserves or you won't have any reserves left. But, but that is gonna be a component of the plan that, that we've put together. But, you know, even though we're willing to raise taxes or we're at least going to, I should say, look at the option of raising taxes, we didn't, we don't feel like as a board that we can do that unless we trim back ourselves. If we, if we are asking the taxpayers to contribute more, we have to do our part. And something else that we have to remember too, you know, we have to be very careful with what we do with the tax rate. Because Noranda makes up a third, roughly a third there of, of the, of the tax revenue. The individual taxpayer and, and all other businesses make up the other third. And then Associated Electric makes up the other third. So you have to be very careful what you do with the tax rate because if you increase it, sure, that puts a little burden on, on all of the individuals and also on small businesses, but it really puts a burden on Associated. So we have to be very smart in what we're doing with the tax rate because we sure can't afford, like Scott said, you know, we sure can't afford to lose them. So, sorry, my own, thank you.
Well, I, I think they started already. I, I heard they've cut some student tending out, some of the camps for the sports during the summer, a few others. But that really doesn't knock a dent in those one million dollar. And as Ryan said, you don't, you don't wanna raise taxes on the, on the paycheck of the district. You have to look at the end first. I know in November of 2006, we had went to the voters one time before in '04 about building a consolidated elementary school. And it failed seventy-eight percent. So in November of '06, the board and Mr. Nance came up with a plan to ask for an eight million dollar bond issued, which included a nine hundred ninety-three thousand dollar QZA bond, which was interest-free money, and an eighty cent tax levy, which was to be used at ten cents per year for eight years. They both had it. I know the first six years, we raised the tax rate a dime each year as planned. The next two, I believe, was five cents per year. And there wasn't an increase last year, was there?
No, no increase.
So we have ten cents left on an eighty cent tax levy. An eight-year plan has already went up to nine with the possibility of a levy. If you use a nickel for two years. People hate the three-letter word tax. I don't wanna put any more burden on the taxpayer. And when that ten cents is gone, that's it. You'll have to go back to the voters for another tax levy. And I just don't know that we would get it. With Noranda being down, people being out of employment, I just don't know if we'd be forced at this time to get it. I, I think I'm gonna have to hold you all if I'm not elected. The board is gonna have to make some tough decisions. I don't wanna see staff lose their jobs. I don't wanna see it. You have to start out small and work your way up. I hope that through retirement, that through attrition, we can get to it. As Ryan said, you can dip in the savings a little bit. But when you don't have it coming in, the savings are gonna run dry for a while.
In general, on this, because I don't, I'm not experienced with, with the budget and not, have not have served on the board before. No education costs money. We have less, just take the obvious. Unless something changes, speaking in general, just look at the budget as a whole. Excessive spending, minimize job loss. Keeping in mind the welfare of the students first and foremost.
What will be your priorities in the elected? And what one thing would you most like to accomplish while serving on the school board?
The main thing that I want to accomplish is that school district to be the best in the state of Missouri as it is now. And with the unfortunate situation of Noranda, having served fifteen years on the board, I think it provides me with experience to review, evaluate, and make unnecessary budget, budget adjustments to enable the district to operate in a physically sound manner while maintaining a positive balance and avoid deficit spending.
To repeat myself, but again, I, I say the students, the welfare of the students is most important. As I mentioned, I have strong roots in United County, experienced in different types of businesses, and I am a parent. I think those experiences have prepared me to work with a team to meet the common goals, whether it's financial or otherwise. And I would be honored to be a part of the board, so I thank you for your consideration.
There are two things, two clear-cut things that I'd like to see happen in this school district. I would like to see us increase our commitment to our, for lack of a better term, our advanced students. I think that we are, we do have a commitment and we have folks such as Cindy Jones that does an absolute excellent job in helping our, our children that need extra help. And that's a commitment that this district has made, and I'm so proud that, that it has. However, I think that sometimes we forget that we have students in this district that are advanced. And to challenge them and to, to, to push them to their potential, we have to do more for them as well. We have to devote resources to them. And those resources, that means staff, that means time, that means money. But, but to me, that is so important. Because I think that we have, I know that we have children in this district that if we push them, they'll do great things. They'll go to universities that are, that are elite and they'll excel there. But if we give them a mediocre, a mediocre education, they won't. Even though they have the potential, they have the natural potential to do it, they won't be able to compete with other students at those, at those universities. I think that is so important. You know, each and every one of you can probably think of alumni that have gone on to be doctors, attorneys, pharmacists, scientists. Those, those people did that because they received an education from New Madred County R1 that pushed them to their limits. We provided them classes that, that challenged them and caused them to be able to do those things. So that's one thing that I would love to see happen and that I'm committed to as a board member. Another thing that's important to me is our technical skills center. I feel like we need to treat our technical skills center just like any other industry. And what I mean by that, if you, if, if, if you are an owner of a business or you, or you have an idea, let's say you're an entrepreneur and you think, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna manufacture a product. Well, the first thing that you do, you see, do I have a market for that product? And then what, whatever the market is, that's what you provide because that's what there's a demand for. As a manufacturer, you wouldn't, you wouldn't manufacture a product and say, well, I'm gonna make this, I hope somebody buys it, I hope somebody wants this. That wouldn't make much sense. So what we have to do with our technical skills center, we have to reach out to businesses. In particular, our local industries. Noranda, hopefully. Associated Electric, Pioneer, some of the businesses in Sykesville. And we have to go to these, these, these executives and say, what do you need? What do you need students graduating? What do you need them to know how to do? And then we need to tailor ours technical skills center to meet that. That may mean a complete revamping of the technical skills center. But if that's what it means, that's what we have to do. Because our technical skills center has suffered in the last several years. We've lost some sending schools. And we have to look attractive to those sending schools. We have to look attractive to those students that they know, hey, if I learn how to do this skill, I got a job waiting on me. And that's another goal of mine for the district. I do wanna say in closing, I, I so much appreciate you all being here, giving us the opportunity to, to answer some of these questions and, and give you an idea of where we stand on some of these things. So thank you.
But I appreciate the candidates coming out. I appreciate everybody else coming out to see what we've had to say. I think we have three very good candidates for the school board this, this time around. And just wanna thanks everybody, thank everybody for coming out.